Stayed here, I think they're coming to us like this year. We're gonna go to Hillary's dad's weekend before, but just for. No, they're in Houston area.
I thought she was from Fort Worth, I don't know why.
Yeah, she's from Houston area.
This is like your second home, isn't it Bill?
He was the meeting last night. Not quite, there's some other important things in the meeting.
Bill, would you get this too? No, I just handed it to her. Alright. Okay. Well, we're past time, aren't we? Well, good morning, everybody. Welcome to the December eighth meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission, the City of Dennison. Our first order of business this morning will be to have roll call.
Brett Evans.
Here.
Susan Arthur.
Here.
Mary Karen.
Here.
Charles Shearer.
Here.
And Spencer Redwine.
Here.
Okay. Alright, just housekeeping, most of you guys that are here this morning already know this, so I don't, I guess I have to go through it, but. The Planning and Zoning Commission is a recommending body. With the exception of Platts and site plans, all information that we, we act on today will be passed on to the city council for final approval, which will be on their. First meeting in January, so. Good luck hard to believe we're already at the end of the year.
Yeah.
So, that being said, we are going to act on our first order of business this morning, which would, we're going to not act on the minutes today, we will vote on those in January, correct? Oh, we're gonna have a, we're gonna have a December twenty-second meeting? Okay, okay. Alrighty. So, we're gonna move on to our public hearings. We're gonna, uh. Anybody would like to come speak either for or against a particular case this morning? Come to the lectern, we ask that you give us your name and address for the record. And, uh, I'm not gonna worry about the three-minute limit this morning, I don't think that's gonna be an issue, so, that being said, we're gonna go to item five A. Mr. Medina?
Good morning, everybody. This is item five A. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, make a recommendation on a request for a conditional use permit for the expanded use of an existing storage facility known as closets and garages located at twenty-nine oh one West Morton. Case number twenty-two zero six-four CUP. So, as I mentioned, the, the project is an expansion of an existing storage facility. It is located within the highway overlay corridor as well as zone commercial. This is the subject property here outlined in yellow. On the east side, you can see the existing storage facility. The applicant's wishing to conduct phase two, which would develop the vacant land to the north and northwest. I know this can be a little difficult to read, but this is the zoning map. Your yellow is your residential, on all your purple is commercial. Outline the property to be expanded in the dark red there. So, the applicant, um, of course is requesting a conditional use permit, but they're also working with city staff on approval of a site plan. The site plan, whenever that's completed and ready, will come before the commission for approval as well, because it's in the highway overlay corridor. Same thing with the preliminary plat, we also received a plat and some civils that we're reviewing. Once the plat and the site plan are ready, we'll bring those before the board. Because it can be a little difficult to read, I went ahead and highlighted in, in yellow the new buildings that are going in, just to make it a little bit easier to, to identify. And just to be clear, we're not approving the site plan today, just the CUP. So, that way, the, the engineer and the applicant can move forward with completing their plans. They don't wanna finish their complete plans if they can't get their CUP. Now, because the site has a little bit of a tricky and irregular shape, the applicant, part of the CUP process, and the reason why I wanted to show the site plan is their front yard setback, instead of meeting the standard twenty-five is ten feet. But given some of the landscaping that they're showing, we have their landscaping plan, and I think that was added into your packet as well. We think ten feet should be adequate. So, there is a variance request there instead of the twenty-five feet. That being said, you can see the detention pond as well as the other buildings. The required twenty-four-foot fire lane is kinda what's pushing them closer to the street. We gotta make sure that our emergency services can get to the back of the facility if needed. And that twenty-four feet loop, you know, approximately forty-eight feet is what's pushing them closer to the street. So, I'm present for any questions that you may have. Staff recommends approval, and, um, the applicant's engineer is also present, Mr. David Vilbig, if you have further questions of them.
I didn't see any, any elevations in, in the packet, did we not have building elevations of what they're proposing?
We don't have those yet, I went ahead and, um, I was looking through the comments that we sent, that was on my list that I followed up with an email, was to show the total building height, since we can look at that. And that'll come through with the site plan, that can be approved by this commission, or will be approved.
Okay, I'll ask, I'll ask David a couple of questions. Anybody have questions, staff? Alright, Mr. Vilbig?
My name is David Vilbig, my address is five seventeen West Woodard, uh, Street in Dennison, Texas. I'm the civil engineer on the project. And if, Bill, if you could go back to the elevation that we included, that one right there. That's the one that everyone will see off of, uh, Morton Street there. And, and what we're doing is making it, it's only twelve feet tall is the maximum height, and what we're doing is giving it more of a residential look than that lovely mini warehouse look that you've seen so much around town. And so, pretty much, that's the only thing you're gonna see from the street. The remainder of the, uh, mini warehouse buildings will be your standard metal building and roll-up doors and all that stuff, but there'll be a few spots through the entrances that you'll be able to get a glimpse of them, but pretty much, we're screening the whole thing with that. And, and that's why we're asking for the ten feet, it is a very odd-shaped lot, and so we're wanna make sure that the ten feet is okay. And then, as far as screening against the residential, we're gonna put a six-foot fence all the way across there. The back of those units will also have this look on it all the way around there.
Now, David, we're not gonna put a, you're not gonna put a fence along Morton Street, are you?
No.
Okay.
No.
The building itself.
It'll look, it'll look just like that, yes.
Okay, yes, alright, thank you. Any other questions of speaker?
And we'll be bringing the site plan and the rest of the, uh, information to the staff here very quickly.
So, that was the back of the, what you're showing there is basically the back of those buildings.
Correct, that's what you'll see off of Morton when you drive by there, it'll almost have a residential look, and that's what the owner and I talked at great length to get something that wasn't near as lovely as your typical mini warehouse projects.
It shows two entrances, is that what you're guessing you're gonna have?
Yes, uh, this, this site plan, if it's approved, we're moving forward, we've already done the grading plan, the only thing we haven't done is sizing that detention basin, but we think it's, uh, plenty big for this, so we'll, we'll be moving forward very quickly on this.
Any other questions? Thanks, sir. Anyone else here speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I move to recommend approval of the request for a conditional use permit of the subject property pending final site plan and plat and civil engineering plan approval.
Second.
Have a motion with a second, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, seen none, motion carries, item five B.
It's item five B. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a replat of blocks twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty-four, all of blocks thirty-five, a portion of the alleys within said blocks twenty-eight and thirty-four, and all the alley within blocks thirty-five, and a portion of streets lying adjacent to the above-mentioned blocks as shown by the Fairmount addition to the City of Dennison, my plat of record, volume forty-eight, I'm sorry, eighty-four, page five thirteen, deed record, Grayson County, Texas.
Hang on a second, hang on a second, Bill, I think I, I messed up. Christine, what did I put on that, on that paper? Five C or five B?
Five C.
What is five C?
Five C is my doors third edition.
Okay, okay, alright, yeah, I'm just making sure I'm on the right one, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Continue.
So, this is the Couch Sims third edition. So, the applicant's requesting approval of the replat to be known as the Couch Sims third edition. City staff recommends approval. Here's an aerial of the subject property here. Along South Fannin, you also have, it's just north of Baker and adjacent to Rice Street. Here's the subject property zoning, as you can see, it's all zone, single-family five within the infill. This is the proposed plat, you have a more clearer version in your packet. So, what the applicant's doing here is taking this one contiguous piece of property and breaking it up with lots all fronting off of South Fannin. We did a bit of digging in our records and were able to find that, um, if you were to look at your plat, you can see that there were some rideaways that would run through, all of those have already been abandoned. So, this project's ready to go. There is a flood zone to the rear of the property. The surveyor went out and did a, created a topography map to identify the crest of that flood zone, and they put on the plat all the finished floor elevations two feet higher than the flood zone per engineering requirements. The applicant's also working on extending, or working with the public works department on extending, I believe it's a water line. I'm sorry, eight hundred feet of sewer line up and down, um, north and south Fannin. So, once that development agreement has been signed, and we, the city has received payment for the developer's share, then we'll go ahead and move forward with filing the plat. Present for any questions that you may have, and the applicant is also here.
Okay, any questions of staff? Thank you, Bill. Mr. Couch? Or Mr. Sims, whichever.
David Couch, nine-nine-two. West Murray, Dennison, Texas. Yeah, this is a project where me and Jesse are working on, um. There's, actually, this property's been vacant, I mean, ever since I can remember, I used to, I used to play in the woods, I think I caught it on fire a couple of times. But, uh, the, uh, this, the fifteen lots here, I mean, it the, uh, the top two lots, I mean, this, this property, the flood zone's actually quite a ways away from the top of this property. It's like seven hundred foot, I can't really see. Seven hundred, seven hundred something foot, so those top lots, and it, there's not a whole lot we can do, so we did extend those lots that deep, all the way to that floodplain, so. Whoever buys those lots will have a deep lot. As far, as far as, you know, fifteen lots and, you know, in this area, I think it'll be great for, you know, the, the south side of Dennison. Any questions about the particular plat or?
Y'all got, um, on the sewer line, y'all got it all worked out as far as?
Yeah, the, the sewer line's gonna be the eight-hundred-foot extension, and, um, I think Kerry with Public Works, they did a, they did a cost estimate there. They did get one bid back at the fifty-eight thousand, and then they drafted a proposal as far as what, what that would cost at our portion.
Okay, so, y'all gonna share the cost with the city on, on the sewer?
Right, yeah, fifty, fifty square.
Any other questions?
Like, going back to your, uh, talking about the floodplain, it looks like perhaps a couple of those lots won't be usable, is that correct?
No, I mean, the, the, the northernmost lot that's there, I mean, that, that line that you see there is a, is a, is a tw- uh, twenty-foot setback, so I mean, there is room there. Of course, how, how close they wanna build to that, but I mean, there's definitely room for, you know, a forty-foot depth out, a deep house, I mean. That, that particular lot is actually, I mean, we're selling it, so I mean, yeah, I, I think we, we lauded it accordingly that you could build something there. I mean, I expect the house to be built there, absolutely. Uh, on the, on the adjacent side, I wish I.
Do you have a, do you have a copy of the map or?
Uh, the, the aerial?
I just wanna see how far we are exactly.
Yeah, and we've also had the the surveyor mark on there, the finished floor elevations. So, the reason we didn't get this plat sooner, even though it was submitted quite some time back, is the surveyor had to go out and shoot the top of the floodzone there, so we made sure that whoever builds in that lot is significantly higher than the floodzone. To make sure that someone's.
Yeah, from that front end to, to the back, I mean, it's, it's approximately a hundred and twenty foot on that first lot to, to the floodplain itself. So, I mean, you have a twenty-foot setback from the build line, and then you have, you know, additional hundred foot there, and there's, there's at least fifty on the, on the su- the southernmost portion, so.
And keep in mind that most of our infill lots are a hundred and fifty foot deep, so it's the same depth from the front end to the pro- to the floodplain as what our normal infill.
It's a lot, yeah. And that's what I'm saying, there's a little, it's a little deceiving, because that top lot, I mean, the top lot's six hundred and fifty-seven a foot to the pin, the pin's offset a hundred foot from the middle of the floodplain, so it's really almost eight hundred foot deep on that top lot.
Okay.
Which is, that's, because it's, so, showing the small picture kinda look deceiving, so I mean, there's a lot more length there than this looks like, I mean, if you're on the, on the photo.
Hey, it's all in proportion, I'm sure, 'cause I'm used to one-twenty's and.
Right, right, yeah. That's what I was trying to convey, I didn't really know how to go about it, but, uh, yeah, I mean, those top two lots are an acre.
Yeah.
A piece, so I mean.
Any other questions of our speaker?
Thank you, David.
Alright, thank you.
Anyone else here speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Alright, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I move to approve the proposed replat pending final execution of a development agreement creating adequate city facilities.
A second.
Have a motion with a second? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Item five C, I will be abstaining from item five C, uh, due to a conflict. I'm gonna turn the meeting over to, uh, Vice Chair, Mr. Evans. Alright, Mr. Medina, go ahead.
Thank you. It's item five C. Receive a report, hold a discussion, conduct a public hearing, and take action on a replat of blocks one and two, block twenty of the Sunnyside addition to be known as the my doors third edition. Case number twenty-two zero one sixteen MP. The proposed replat means all city Den- Dennison requirements. This is the aerial of the property outlined in yellow, it's on the corner of Debois and South Fannin Avenue, I'm sorry, South Skullen Avenue. This is the zoning of the property, here it is outlined in the, the bold red. It's all zone residential, I believe that's se- single-family seven-point-five, I'm sorry, single-family five. This is the proposed plat, so as you can see, they're taking, uh, let me take a closer look, they're taking the lots that face Debois and turning them onto Skullen. Just to allow them to build a, an extra house than otherwise if they were to leave them as existing. Um, as with the previous case, the applicant's also working with the City of Dennison Public Works Department. They've agreed to extend a hundred feet of sewer and two hundred feet of water along Skullen. The Public Works Department's currently drafting a development agreement with them. As with the last item, once the development agreement has been signed, and the city has received their the developer's share of the cost sharing, then we can move forward with filing the plat pending approval today. So, I'm present for any questions that you may have, um, and staff recommends approval. Oh, and this is a public hearing as well.
Any questions of staff? Alright. Is the applicant here?
I think he just walked out.
Well, we'll hold that against him.
Definitely he is here.
Anyone else, anyone here to speak in favor of this request? Anyone here to speak in opposition of the request? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to move to approve the proposal replat pending final execution of a development agreement creating adequate city utilities.
A second.
We have a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Motion is approved. Alright. We'll move on to five C and let Mr. Shearer rejoin us.
Okay. Mr. Evans, item five D, correct?
Yes.
Item five D, sorry.
Alrighty.
Welcome back, Charlie. It's item five D. Receive a report, hold a discussion, and conduct a public hearing, make a recommendation on an ordinance amending Article Three zoning districts, section twenty-eight point three-nine, central area, as well as the commercial historic overlay district, Article Four Use Regulations, section twenty-eight point four-nine, Use Regulations, and Article Six Definitions, section twenty-eight point six-three point one, Definitions to establish regulations to define and regulate mobile food units. So, the proposed amendments to the ordinance define mobile food units and recognize, re- regulate their use, their locations, and some of the requirements. So, as our downtown area begins to revitalize, and we wanna try and promote the use of of mobile food vendors, we're starting to see an increased request for that, we also wanna make sure that we preserve our downtown, so we think that the ordinance in front of you today helps to, um, thoroughly vet mobile vendors downtown, but also allow them to be operating in your standard commercial, local retail, office-type zoning districts. There is a typo in my staff report here in the summary. It reads, "As downtown Dennison begins to revitalize, staff suggests that a CUP be permitted for all mobile food unit vendors," that's supposed to read, "all vendors within central area." So, in your packet here today, you'll see the, uh, chapter fifteen ordinance, but I went ahead and handed out the chapter twenty-eight ordinance. Uh, this is a separate page here that we got back from our legal team, I wanted to make sure that y'all had it to look at. On the second-to-last page, you'll see the use table. So, this use table will allow for mobile food units to operate within office, local retail, community retail, regional retail, commercial, business park, light industrial, and heavy industrial. So, that way, if a taco truck wants to set up on site of a, of a construction site or something like that, they should be able to do that. They would go through our city offices downstairs, they would receive one permit, and they would give us a list of the places they're proposing to operate. I would check the zoning, make sure they're good, and then they would be able to move forward. Now, if they're wanting to operate within central area, you can see that we added a C there that's underlined. It would require a conditional use permit. Because we anticipate higher amounts of walkability and a lot of interaction between vehicles and people walking, especially with Main Street being, being changed, we wanna ensure that we don't have food vendors just setting up on an empty lot somewhere without, uh, ensuring that there's adequate traffic flow, that there's adequate trashcans, seating, things, things of that sort that you see. For example, if you look at eighteen eighty Ice House, they did a phenomenal job with, with their mobile vendor. So, we wanna make sure that those types of standards, that type of, uh, setup is replicated in our downtown. Furthermore, in this, in this ordinance here, you'll see in, uh, section twenty-eight point four, four-seven point two, I believe this is page three, uh, some of the parking requirements. We're requiring that the area around the, the mobile vendor is lit, it's just as long as you're not shining extremely bright lights on traffic. That was one of the main things we wanted to touch on, was to ensure that these vendors aren't inhibiting traffic. We're also showing that, or requesting that they are set up on an improved surface, we don't want people setting up on just grass on the middle of, uh, on the, on the side of Texoma Parkway somewhere, it's gotta be an actual site. In addition to these changes here, um, Chris Wallentine, our city secretary, she's kinda led the charge and been tasked with updating our ordinance. Our mobile food vendor ordinance hadn't been updated since the sixties in any meaningful way. There's a lot of antiquated language in there that just was, it was, it was wild to, to implement and administer, so we think this modernizes it quite a bit, um, so she led the charge on that, and, and if you have any questions, both of us can answer those for you.
And we've gone from mobile food, from road coach to mobile food vendors.
Yeah, I'm surprised there wasn't a mobile vendor permit in the sixties. Or a permit of any kind.
Yeah.
Bill, I had a question on the, on the parking requirements. So, is that fifteen spaces in the, or the the fifteen, or if it's multiple trucks, twenty spaces? That's within the central area? Is that just if it's in a parking? In a parking lot?
Yeah, now, because it's in the central area, we'd apply those central area zoning, those parking rules as well, I would count on-street parking or some of the adjacent nearby free parking. For example, eighteen eighty, they did.
Right, that's what I was wondering, I was like, 'cause you're not gonna have fifteen spaces for any of these businesses, really. In the central area, don't have parking lots necessarily. So, oh, so you would, you would count the, the shared, like, Main Street parking or so forth?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, otherwise, I don't think they'd be able to meet that requirement.
Okay. That, that was my concern there, is figuring out what actual place would have fifteen parking spaces besides just the city lots.
Any other questions?
Just a brief one, will this impact to the event kinds of permits that we have at all? You know, like, if we have, uh, for music on Main, typically, Don and Dow would have a rotation system where different people would be in charge of, uh, of food event that per, per night, per Friday night. Is that, it won't impact that, that would be the same as it's been?
Yeah, that, that wouldn't be changed.
Okay.
When we were working on these policies, we made sure to include the Main Street Department, um, and, and looked at their approach to whenever they put on these events, to ensure that this policy isn't gonna interfere with them. They would go through a separate, uh, special events permit, so we would look at the entire site as a whole, and I don't think there's anything that we were recommending changing on the special event side of things.
Okay, good.
Yeah, so that, in that case, it would just be a special event permit, not each individual food truck would have to go and get their own specific permit or whatever for that particular event, it would just be more up to Main Street or whoever it is that's putting on the event, correct?
Chris? Okay, yeah.
Um, so on the special event side, we're actually gonna, there's an exception in the actual mobile, uh, unit ordinance that we've done. Um, the new ordinance is about fourteen pages long, so that will be coming to council on the fourth for approval. It does accept out the special events, however, the change to it will be that anyone doing a special event will be required to have a limited permit, so we're breaking it down into three different permits. So, anyone coming in for a special event would still be required to go through the process through the CERT team and acquire a permit at a lower rate than like an annual permit type thing. So, yeah, and we did involve Grayson County also in the process, so we can make sure that all the health regulations are followed, especially with COVID, so. They contributed a lot, and we also named them as a regulatory authority to write citations, 'cause they do enforce our health and sanitation ordinances, so. So, they will be added as a regulatory authority in that mobile unit, uh, process as well, so.
Are any of the existing food truck parks, uh, grandfathered, or they have to go back and?
So, food truck parks, because they're already set up as a use, um, they can come back and add to their permit if they want. Um, we are gonna let them, we are gonna allow them to come in and add some sites to what they currently have if they wish to, or on the renewal, they can add that. Um, they are required to provide a list of where they're planning to, sort of a itinerary of dates and times they plan to be at different locations or other locations they wanna serve, so.
Seems like it'll give them more flexibility.
It will, that's kinda been the biggest complaint, um, from the mobile food vendors, is that right now, our permits are site-specific. So, you pay two-hundred and fifty dollars if you're a Dennison resident, three-hundred and seventy-five if you don't live here, and it's only good for one site. So, if you wanted an additional site, you have to acquire an additional permit. So, this kind of gives them a little more
This would be better.
Bang for their buck, so to speak. Yeah, good, so.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. Okay, any other questions, staff? Anyone else here speak in favor of this request? Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, entertain a motion.
I move to approve, I move to recommend approval of the proposed amendments to the Dennison Municipal Code, chapter twenty-eight.
I'll second it.
Have a motion with a second. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carries. Okay, any staff updates today?
Just a quick one. Uh, we did receive, or we, we, I guess we have obtained a new, um, executive director, that's gonna be over planning and zoning, building and permitting, as well as neighborhood services and animal control. His name is Mr. John Webb. He filled a similar role in Prosper, and he'll be coming to us. First of January is when he'll start, so you'll see him, and I'll make sure to introduce him, if you haven't met him already. But he, he's been doing planning and zoning longer than I've been alive, so we can't wait to have him, this is gonna be awesome.
So what do I, I wanna know, are you going on vacation? Are you going on vacation after December twenty-first?
No, not.
What's that?
Are you going on vacation after December twenty-first?
No, no. Don't tell him I said that, Charlie.
I hope not.
Yeah, we're, we're excited, I'm, I'm thrilled to get some help, and, and, uh, he seems like he's gonna be a good mentor, I can't wait.
I got to meet with him on Friday, and, uh, he's gonna be a real asset to the city, he's gonna be a team player. He's a very common sense kinda guy, he's not a, you know, we gotta do it exactly by the book kinda, kinda person.
I spoke with, uh, Mr. Adderberry last night, and he speaks very, very highly of him, he's worked with him, has known him for many, many years, and is very impressed with him.
And he's, um, he's done a lot of, uh, he's worked in a lot of, a lot of different cities.
Busy cities.
Mainly suburbs of Dallas, but.
Like Frisco.
No, no, I think Frisco was one of those that he missed, but he's been in cities like Irving and Carrollton. And that's one of the things we talked about Friday, is the cities he's been working in in the past are like, like Barwin and Irving, they have the same redevelopment issues, basically, that Dennison has.
Yeah.
Because their old cities and their infrastructures and all that are dilapidated, so he's got experience with, with those kind of, those kind of cities, so I think he's gonna be, gonna be good for us. Okay, nothing else, then I am going to, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm.
Second.
Boy, they'll, they get on.
Somebody else do it, too.
I don't even, I think Spence had the first, who had the second, Mary?
I'll do it.
Okay, Mary had the second. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at ten-thirty-three AM.